Welcome to the City of Sydney Council Meeting, Tuesday, October 28th. Call to order, join me for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Open Meetings Act is over there on the west wall. Are there any comments by the public? Yep. State your name, would you please?
Yes, my name is Brad Sherman. My phone number is 249-2321. Feel free to call me at any time if you want to. Mayor Bondiard, Councilman Coons, and absent Councilman Kirkman. Councilman Lee, thank you all for what you do. I know sometimes it may not seem like an enjoyable job, but volunteering very rarely is. It is something that I did hold, do hold near and dear to my heart, the people that put so much time into this community and the things, traditions that we have. And unfortunately, I wasn't here two weeks ago to come back and pay my respects for, excuse me, John Phillips, who I think many will agree has done a lot of great things in this community. He was always there to do anything, donate popcorn, lend out the movie theater and stuff like that. So I'm here to let everybody know that there is a lighting committee that we need to get back up on those rooftops, fill in those lights, add lights. I know the city building needs lights on it. There's lots of other things that we need to do. So if anybody wants to step forward, like Rob or anybody like that, that would be fantastic. But again, thank you guys for all you do, everybody in Sydney that volunteers. It's way easier to sit back and complain about things than it is to roll up your sleeves and be part of the solution. So thank you guys for what you do and everybody in this town that does what they do to make it what it is. So thank you very much. 249-2321, any questions about the lighting committee? I'll still be here to help. Thank you.
Is there any more?
Good evening, gentlemen. I just wanted to comment on the mower that's being purchased for the park and the gator. Just a few comments on it. The city currently has one of these John Deere mowers in their fleet, I believe almost the same model. It was purchased about 18 months or two years ago. I know because I offloaded it off the truck. It's a very luxurious piece of equipment. It is the top in the industry, pretty much. John Deere is considered the Ferrari of its industry, far above average in quality and price. It's my understanding of the mower that's being replaced is only about eight years old. Most folks are driving cars that are 10, 15, 20 years old. Eight years seems pretty quick to replace this type of equipment. I'm just hoping that we look at PM schedules, maintenance, how it's being housed, or is it truly at end of life? Or is it just being purchased because it's budgeted? I know sometimes it becomes almost routine to budget these in every couple of years, which I can understand because we do need to replace the equipment sooner or later. But is this really the right time? Milton Freeman's famous theory on spending money still holds true, which is when individuals spend their own money, they are careful with cost and quality. However, when they spend other people's money on other people, example, government bureaucrats allocating taxpayer funds, there is a lack of incentive for efficiency, leading to waste and poor results. I think, for my take on that is, have we really vetted it out? Is it really necessary? Are we buying it because it's budgeted? I know this last budget, the city raised taxes, property taxes, by about $60,000. We can't be in the budgeting process. It states it right on the city page. It's up to the city manager who can comment in the budget talks, in the budget process. It's right there on the city page. So we have a time now to comment before it's presented, so I don't know completely what Chase is going to present. So I'm kind of blind a little bit to it, but I do know that it's being proposed for a new gator and a new mower. Now, had these two items been redlined in the budget talks, there probably wouldn't have been a tax increase this year. Am I right? Pretty close. These type of luxurious purchases are indicative of the fiscal spending that's causing our city property tax hard burn, in my opinion. I think the council did an outstanding job in vetting the electrical rates increase that was simply exposed to pretty much be a giant tax increase. So my hat's off to you on that. You guys asked a lot of great questions. You vetted it out. You took the time. I just wanted to let that be known, that maybe we could pass on this one, maybe increase the maintenance budget on it if the repairs need to be done, rather than buying. This piece of equipment proposed, my understanding, if it's got a seven iron deck on it, is about $45,000 to $55,000. The gator, I think, runs 15 to 25, depending on what you put on it. So it would easily eclipse the tax increase that we had this year in property taxes. So that was really all I wanted to comment on, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there any more comments? Can I have a motion to excuse Councilman Kirkman for being gone today?
I'll make a motion to excuse him.
Second.
Coons.
Yes.
Bondiard.
Yes.
Radcliffe.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Now, approval of minutes, October 14th, 2025, city manager recruitment. Is there a motion?
I'll motion to approve minutes from October 14th, city manager recruitment.
Second.
Bondiard.
Yes.
Radcliffe.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Coons.
Yes.
Is there a motion for October 14th, 2025, council minutes?
I'd motion to approve the minutes from the October 14th regular council meeting.
I'll second.
Radcliffe.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Coons.
Yes.
Bondiard.
Yes.
Street year and certification, consideration of Resolution 20251002, year and certification of city street superintendent Clay H. Radke.
Good evening, Hank Radke of the Street Department, or Clay H. Radke. What this is, is verifying that I was a street superintendent licensed and hired by the city for the fiscal year 2025, January 1st to December of '25. Next resolution that we're going to have, another part of this, is that I'll be the street superintendent for the following year of 2026, January to December 2026. It's an annual thing that's required by the state. It's another formality, like our compliance, we do things we have to send in the state to prove that you had some money that had the license to do it. Every town, every county, everybody has to do it every year. So this is just, this is for. And we get an incentive for payment for having the licensed street superintendent. And this is tough, send to them, so they'll send us that incentive.
Is there a motion for Resolution 2025?
Fair question for you.
Yeah.
Is there somebody like below you that if you were gone for a week or two, does that matter?
No.
It doesn't, just as long as there's somebody that's employed?
No, and we are fortunate that we do have another employee of the Street Department has a Class A license. So if I step down, there's a guy that can fill in and hire someone or hire him, which I, when that time comes, I would suggest, that's what we do. I've been training him, showing him everything to do, so. Nope, if I'm gone, I am fortunate, and the city is very unfortunate, fortunate that I can leave and for two weeks, if I was gone for two weeks vacation, nothing happens, it's everybody can go right on through their thing. They're well trained, they know what to do, and we're very fortunate of that. I don't even worry about if I'm gone. And that's because we have them trained properly. Yes, we do have guys, and God forbid, wait people off. If I was gone tomorrow, you do have a guy that could.
So this is to approve the 2025 one and point for 2026.
Yes, because that's how it is. I don't have a copy of it. Two?
Yes, two motions.
Two.
Is there a motion for Resolution 20251002, year end?
I motion for consideration of Resolution 20251002.
Second.
Lee.
Yes.
Coons.
Yes.
Bondiard.
Yes.
Radcliffe.
Yes.
Appointment of Clay H. Radke as a street superintendent, Class A license S1072, by the mayor of January 1st, 2026, to December 31st, 2026, for the purpose of the 2026 calendar highway incentive payment. Is there a motion?
I'll motion for that.
Second.
Coons.
Yes.
Bondiard.
Yes.
Radcliffe.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, thank you.
Cheyenne County Chamber Quarterly Report, Joe.
Joe McCarron, Director of the Chamber of Commerce. It's great to be in front of you guys again. As our previous speaker used to always say, we're in the greatest county in the world, so appreciate you guys being a part of that. As you can see by the quarterly report that I gave you, we have had a lot going on, and I don't want to reread all that to you, but we had a lot of activities last month, around 809 people total in attendance. We currently have 242 members of the chamber, and quite a bit of stuff going on. All the Bright Christmas Tour is starting to happen. In case you guys aren't ready for Christmas, it's coming anyway. So we're decorating Christmas trees, and Kendra over there at the tourism office is doing a great job, as always, and it's going to be great out there. It's going to be beautiful. Shop Cheyenne County Days is right around the corner. We're going to start, actually, the date on your paper is off by a couple of days. It's November 24th through December 13th is the dates on that. So as always, Shop Cheyenne County Days is a time to encourage shopping locally and spending money locally instead of spending it online or going out of town to spend the money. This is really what makes our economy tick here, is folks that spend their money locally. And I definitely know that the local businesses appreciate that. Dancing with the Stars is right around the corner, December 31st, and our annual banquet will be on January 10th this year. Both of those will be great events. For the annual banquet, we will have comedians, and so it should be a lot of laughter, a lot of fun. Right now, also, we're right in the middle of marketing hometown America. We have several, well, five different groups going on around the county, people talking about what we can do better as a county, what we can improve on, how can we get folks to move here and to be part of our workforce. And so there's been a lot of great conversations, some tough conversations, but it's been a good thing overall. So, like I said, a lot of good things happening in Cheyenne County. I got word today, just as an example of some good things, we have a new business in town that, a guy that does computer repair. So it's great to have another person that's doing that here and can complement the other ones that are doing it. So always something exciting happening in Cheyenne County.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So when you say, like, you have total contacts, what are, what involves total contacts? Like 1,758 is a lot.
It is a lot. So total contacts in this is people that I have physically talked to and spoken with. So it's not just in passing type conversations. It's when I go to businesses and I have conversations with folks and talk to them about how their business is going, about what we can help them with and what we can do better, so.
I went to the commissioners' meeting.
Yes.
And on, and I know you read something too about not being economic development.
Right.
Can you, can you explain that to me? Because I know, like, on our contract, it says that your economic development.
Well.
The chamber will actively recruit and facilitate new and expanding retail. So I wanted to.
Right.
There were some questions that people had on, are you economic or not?
So we are not economic development. We do some things to help the city with economic development. We do have a contract with the city that we do some of the economic development functions, but we are not economic development. It's not the chamber's job to do economic development, but the city in years past has asked us to help them with that, so we have filled those gaps. Yeah, economic development and chamber are two different focuses, generally. The economic development is more focused on expansion, bringing new businesses to town and helping businesses to find new locations, bigger buildings or whatnot. The chamber more focuses on growth, which is helping a business in their current footprint to grow and become better at what they do and to sell more, so.
But you guys are willing to help with new recruit?
Definitely. I mean, we do have a contract with the city. We're not trying to renege on our contract or anything like that.
Okay.
But yeah, we, the point is to help the community understand the difference between economic development and the purpose of a chamber.
Okay.
So, does that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay.
That answers their questions.
Yeah, and I'd be, you know, anybody in the community that has those kind of questions, I'd be happy to talk with them one-on-one, even to help them understand, so.
Is that all the questions for Joe?
I don't have any.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Consideration to purchase equipment, Chase Ferrex.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Chase Ferrex. I'm the Parks Department Superintendent. We have a couple pieces of equipment here, one for the parks and then one for the cemetery. I will start with the parks to begin with. The Parks Department seeks council's approval to move forward with a purchase for a new 1575 72-inch front deck mower. During the 2025-26 budget sessions, 72-inch front deck mower was identified for purchase, and during that time, we appropriated $35,000 for this piece of equipment. Previously, council has approved this purchase in 2007, 2011, 2014, 2020, and 2023. A little background, through the capital equipment purchase, this parks is replacing a 2015 John Deere Wham! mower with 2,000 hours of operation. 21st Century of Sydney has a Sourcewell Cooperative, so this is recognized under the bill or under the bid, under the contract section. Sourcewell helps government, education, and nonprofit agencies operate more efficiently by offering them access to competitively awarded contracts for goods and services. Right now, we have three front deck mowers, two in the park, one in the cemetery, and they keep our parks looking great throughout the spring and summer. And then during the winter months, the mower decks can be replaced with rotary broom, snowblower, and a front blade, and this allows Parks Department to remove snow from sidewalks and trails. Financial implications, so this is a general fund expenditure. It's part of our capital equipment purchasing budget. It's part of the city's five-year budget planning process. So the full price for the John Deere front deck mower is $47,647.68. We have a trade-in value for the Wham! mower of $13,500, so the net impact would be $34,147.68. And this is $852.32 less than what we had budgeted for this piece of equipment. I would submit to City Council for approval for the bid of $34,147.68 for the front deck mower from 21st Century. Alternatives are to deny the purchase and choose a different option. So alluding to the questions earlier about this John Deere, so it's a 2015 John Deere Wham! mower that we've had, and the biggest issue that we've had with this mower is performance. I did a little bit of an experiment, I would say. So we mow the soccer fields every Monday with this mower, and it takes five hours to mow and 16.5 gallons of gas. So I decided to use two of our 1575 mowers to mow the same property, and it takes three hours and 14 gallons of gas. So we save an hour and a half and then two hours, two and a half gallons of gas during that time. The Wham! mower is a 10-foot mower. It's a little, little bit over 10 and a half feet, so it is a bigger swath. But the main issue is, is that if we get into any tall grass, any tough grass, we're going half the speed of its capability. So that's my biggest issue, why I wanted to get rid of this piece of equipment and move to the 1575, where we have, we can use two of them on the soccer fields and get three and a half hours instead of five hours, and then you're saving two, two and a half gallons of gas as well. Another big thing with this Wham! mower is when we bought it, gosh, I can't remember how much it is, but it strictly mows. That's it. It does not have any attachments for it. This Wham! mower has attachments. We already have a broom, we already have a snowblower, and we already have the front blade. So during the winter, we can use it to, or to clean off any of our trails and any of our sidewalks, so. And I did have John Deere just give me a quote for a brand-new Wham! mower to see, and base price, let me get official amount. So a list price without our discount is $93,800, or $484, and with our discount, it goes down to $73,864.97. So for me, already with our performance issues, being able to find a different alternative, I think with our 15, going with the 1575 that we can use year-round was a better option.
Get more use out of it?
Yes, yep. And we've already have two of them in the park, one in the cemetery. Have not had any issues with them bogging down or any of those. There's times if we have rain, like we did last year, where we have to mow the soccer fields twice, because if we wait a whole week, it'll take more than five hours to get that done, so.
Has there been any maintenance issues with the Wham?.
No, we have not had any maintenance issues with that.
Okay.
The big thing is, is that it has a mulching kit on it, so it takes it longer to get through. It's cutting more. If we took the mulching kit off of it, yeah, we could get through some things faster, but we're going to have to go right back over it, because it just leaves swaths, so.
Chase, do you ever consider other brands besides John Deere?
I have considered Toro. When I worked in Lincoln, we did, we used Toro, and that's kind of, I ran a 10-footer in Lincoln, that was a Toro, and it didn't have these issues at all with the Wham! But the biggest thing is the service here. If we have some big issue that our mechanic can't get to, yeah, someone can come from Fort Collins to work on our equipment, but being able to just take it down the road is the biggest thing, so.
Now, you said 1575s, would they have troubles going through the tall grass either?
No, no, they weren't, not at all.
Any more questions for Chase?
I will say, I remember the last time we bought one of these types of mowers, I was shocked at how much they are. I mean, if I was on The Price is Right, I would definitely not win, because if I had to guess what that mower costs, I wouldn't get it, but I get it.
This price that we're at, because we're trading in this Wham!, this is lower than the price that we've had on the last, at least 2020 and 2023, that I've looked back. I think we spent about $46,000 in 2023, so.
How many hours should we get on these?
We look.
Because the Wham! is a diesel, right?
Yep. We look at, the last one that we traded in was over 3,000 hours, 3,500. I don't like to go that high, but it all depends on where we sit at with the budget. I would say anywhere in the 2,500 range, I would hope, to get out of it. But if we get this, this mower with this 1575, it'll cut down on a lot of hours on the other two. So being able to use it during the winter, so, and I'm hoping that'll cut down on some of our irrigated mowing as well. So right now, it takes us about four days, and I'm hoping to get down to like three and a half, three, so.
So that could free up somebody to mow our own properties that we lease out? I guess you can say we hired to have done?
Yeah, I mean, for sure. That's something we could look at, yes, yep.
If you, if we purchase this, it comes out of your equipment reserves, correct?
Yes.
So it's money you've been saving to.
Yes.
Purchase some more.
Yep.
Is there any more questions for Chase? Is there a motion to purchase the John Deere 1575 72-inch front deck mower?
I'll make the motion to approve the mower.
I'll second it.
Bondiard.
Yes.
Radcliffe.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Coons.
Yes.
Now, we're on to the John Deere gator.
Yes. So this is through the cemetery, seeks council approval for a Gator TX 4x2. This was identified in the 2025-26 budget, and during that budget session, $9,000 was appropriated for the Gator TX. Previously, council has approved this purchase in 2012, 2014, 2015, 2017, and 2024. With this purchase, we were replacing a 2015 Gator TS with 1,500 hours of operation. To ensure we would get this piece of equipment within the budget amounts, we found a Sourcewell Cooperative with 21st Century, and this is recognized under the quote section for the contract. The Gator TX utility vehicle will be used for cleaning stone rows when blown flowers, hauling trash, prepping sites for funerals, and hauling equipment to, for string trimming duties through the cemetery. This is a general fund expenditure. The funds would come out of the capital, capital equipment budget, which is part of the city's five-year budget planning process. Full price of the machine is $11,485.27. The trade-in value for the Gator TS is $1,500. The net impact to the budget would be $9,985.27. $985.27 more than what we had budgeted for this piece of equipment. I would submit to City Council for the approval of this bid, nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents for a new Gator TX four by two uti- utility vehicle from twenty-first century. Um, alternatives are to deny the purchase and choose an alternative option.
Is there issues with this, the one that we have right now?
There's not any issues with the ones that we have now besides the hours of operation. As we get higher and higher hours of operation, more and more issues that um, we do have some that are in the park that are over two thousand, twenty-five hundred, so more than this. Um, but this Gator gets used on a daily basis for the cemetery, has the most hours other than one mower. Um, on this piece of equipment.
Is there any more questions? Is there a motion to approve the John Deere Gator four by two utility vehicle?
So moved.
Second.
Radcliffe.
Yes.
Lee.
No.
Coons.
Yes.
Bondi Guard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Discussion of ordinance six one eight point zero four, revision addition to backyard chickens.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Uh, during the October fourteenth regular council meeting, council directed the city manager to work with Megan Denardo to compile several city ordinances related to allowing chickens within the city limits as well as to review the current code enforcement ordinance concerning animals under section six eighteen of the already established ordinance. As to ask, uh, review the ordinance presented by Sierra, the City of Sydney Code Enforcement Officer to determine whether any additional changes would be necessary should a revision of the chicken ordinance be approved, allowing chickens within city limits. Um, within some of those ordinances, uh, she had cited section six eighteen point two, animals at large. So that section does reference other animals which would include chickens if found at large. However, uh, there would be some revisions to that existing ordinance, we would have to remove chickens as declared to be a common nuisance and prohibited underneath this section. So within that ordinance, again, um, as far as the enforcement side of things, the animals at large, chickens would be covered under that as the animals, but we would have to remove, um, the declaration of chickens uh, being a common nuisance and prohibited within that specific one. Uh, when we look at section six eighteen nineteen, dangerous animals, the term animals is used broadly in this section and would encompass chickens if applicable. Also, um, it does classify foul as a domestic animal kept as a pet within that ordinance itself. So from my reading, we wouldn't need to do any revisions to that specific ordinance itself. In section six eighteen point twenty, barking and howling dogs, in my assessment, this provision applies regardless of what causes the barking, um, whether it's another dog, cat, person or chicken. I, again, I wouldn't think that any revisions would be necessary with that specific ordinance. When we look at section six eighteen in animal waste, um, the section references domestic animals under Nebraska Revised State Statute fifty-four, twenty-nine, twenty-six. Poultry are diva- defined as domesticated birds and would fall under this definition. So again, there wouldn't be any specific ordinances that are information within that ordinance to change that since it does reference domesticated animals. Now, uh, one section that would need some additional revisions would be six eighteen eighteen, the impounding and destruction of dogs and dogs running at large and dangerous animals. Within that section, um, everything that it is speaking to as far as the impounding and destruction of animals, I mean, it really is tailored to dogs. Um, it doesn't mention a whole lot of other animals. I mean, it does mention animals as far as the verbiage in there, but it's reflecting back to dogs as that uh, current section is stipulated in there. So with that, that would need, in my opinion, a complete revision as far as being able to impound chickens if, if that's the process and as well as the destruction process. So currently we do not have any facilities or the equipment suitable for handling chickens and, and retaining them within the compounds of our police station. Uh, costs could include staff time, equipment, containment space, veterinary services uh, or contracts with outside agencies for impoundment or euthanasia. Uh, and at this time, we really have no reliable estimate of what those costs actually would be, but not well positioned right now as far as impounding and holding chickens and the process of where we go down as far as dispatching them or, or rehoming them. So in comparisons and just reviewing those that were stated by Sierra, that's the biggest revision that, that we're gonna have to look into if a chicken ordinance is reversed and allowing them within city limits. And and so, like I mentioned, City Council also advised, I was working with Megan Denardo in a proposed draft, so in an effort to ensure that a proposed new ordinance would not negatively impact the existing zones that are already allowed chickens and other livestock, specifically zones A, AR and R one A, is important to note that ordinance sixteen eighteen point zero four currently permits chickens within these zones at a rate of one animal per acre. This limitation is consistent with the provisions of other types of livestock that those residents are also allowed to have within those zones. So any amendment to the current ordinance, we would also need to allow zones A, AR and R one A, the same number of chickens as permitted in other zones within the city while maintaining the existing regulations for those zones related to all other livestock and shelter requirements. So in addition to the ordinance titled backyard chickens in non-agricultural and rural zones would also be, need to be required, which would stipulate that residents within R one, R two and C two zones may keep up to six hens within the rear yard of their property. Um, within that draft that you all have, it also proposes that an annual permit would be required prior to housing chickens within the R one, R two and C two zones. So again, we're not stipulating these for those zones that are already in the current ordinance are allowed to have chickens. The only thing that we're changing in the A, that the proposed change for the draft ordinance in A, AR and R one is to stipulate that they could have six chickens per acre of property that they home rather than one animal per acre, so that they're still allowed to have the same amount as individuals within the city would. They would not be required to have them in rear-facing yards. Uh, anything that I talk about moving forward is specifically tailored to individuals that would be able to have chickens within R one, R two and C two zones within the city limits. Um, so again, animal permit would be required prior to housing chickens within those zones. The discussed permit fee was approximately fifty dollars per year, which aligns with the average rate observed in multiple cities across the state. The annual fee would be listed in the city's fee schedule for reference and not be included directly within the ordinance. This approach would allow flexibility should the fee amount need to be revised in future fiscal years. Residents located within the R one, R two and C two zones would be limited no more than six hens at any given time. Roosters would be prohibited and the butchering of chickens outdoors would not be permitted as well. And again, I'm just highlighting some of the ordinances from in that draft. Coops within these zones must be located within the rear yard only, enclosed by a privacy fence no greater than six feet in height and constructed in compliance with ordinance twelve sixty-eight. Permit holders would be required to consent to inspections by city code enforcement or police officers and then applicable violations discovered during inspections could subject to enforcement actions in accordance with city regulations. So when we look at financial implementations, uh, at this time, there is no real definitive data indicating that a proposed ordinance would result in additional costs to the city at this time. The implementation of an annual permit fee, if this were to come to fruition, is expected to generate additional revenue, which we would be allocating to support code enforcement efforts related to the ordinance. However, any potential increase in expenses to the city is currently uncertain and would need to be evaluated if it's such ordinance would pass. Recommendation, I encourage, uh, council to carefully consider the benefits and concerns raised by community members and the way the potential impacts on neighborhoods, code enforcement ordinance to proceed through, oh, sorry, code enforcement resources and city operations before making a final decision. Should the council find the draft accept- acceptable, I would recommend directing staff to prepare a final version of the ordinance to proceed through a formal briefing process for adoption. Alternatives, the council could recommend not proceeding with the current draft ordinance and request additional revisions or modifications. Council could choose not to change the current ordinance, thereby continuing to allow chickens only in zones A, AR and R one as currently stipulated within our ordinance.
I've got a couple of questions on here.
Yes, sir.
It'd be under coop and enclosure requirements. Number two, your privacy fence.
Yep.
What brought that up?
Those are just discussions internally on there. I know, uh, Marshall and I have spoken that as well too and, uh, some other individuals within the city. We've looked at it with some other ordinances, I think it was Norfolk, don't quote me on that. They're a part of privacy fence as well too, but trying to stay neutral and respectful to the neighbors as well too. As far as if you want chickens in there, understand that it'd be required an indoor closure as well, but it may be something that they'd be a little bit more welcoming if they're not seeing every day when they go outside to have their coffee.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna play devil's advocate.
Sure, absolutely.
I don't like dogs, which is not true, I have dogs, but I don't like dogs. My neighbor has a chain link fence.
Yep.
You're gonna make them put up a privacy fence?
No, we don't have an ordinance that says so, so I would not, absolutely not.
So, I mean, there's a point there and then
Yeah.
The other one is the offsets from the property lines.
Mm-hmm.
I can see the ten-foot offset on shared property lines, fence to fence.
Mm-hmm.
But I'll use my house as an example, I have a sixteen-foot easement alley behind my back fence. So I mean, is there a reason to set, set it off ten foot from the back fence? There's nobody living behind me for sixteen feet before their privacy.
I think just to keep it uniform as far as enforcement side with the ordinance and making sure that those that don't fall within those situations, within those specific zones.
Well, and that's where I
Yeah.
Said share, shared property line.
About the difference, we actually had it, I think it was twenty at first and we had conversations on, that seems a little ridiculous uh, there, there's not a lot of backyards that would even meet those measurements from there. So that's where we came together and kinda said the ten-foot from the side property line, ten-foot for the rear. I know other cities had, I think it was twenty-foot from the neighbor structure as well too that was indicated on there. So we felt in conversation with that, that the ten-foot.
I, I was just looking at the ones, you know, like I said, I have sixteen-foot easement.
Yeah.
Easement behind my house before the next property line, so.
Yep.
And I was playing the devil's advocate there myself, I also, like my property is a corner lot, my neighbor, or technically, I'm
Megan, can you come up?
My, my, my lot is a corner lot, so technically the street is my, even though it's my backyard, the street is. So I was being devil's advocate when I was trying to come up with this as well because, you know, where property lines are, obviously the city has easements there even though you have grass, like where does that land? So I was trying to be devil's advocate with that as well.
Marshall, did you have a comment?
So the only thing I was gonna say about that is
Can you come up?
Oh, sorry, you're right. Marshall Hall, Chief Building Official for the City of Sydney. Um, basically, the, the ones that I had, the ordinances that I had seen prior, uh, they pretty much put the, uh, in, where the chicken coop could go, pretty much right smack dab in the middle of a, of a yard, which kind of just doesn't work, I mean, that's your whole yard. So, uh, cause a lot of them said, well, was it twenty feet? And some were even forty feet from the next house over, well, you in my opinion, you cannot go off of another existing property to match something up on your property, that just doesn't even make sense to me. So essentially what we did is we just tried to make it, you know, more applicable to people, ten feet off of, off the, the, the property lines, cause that way it gives a little barking room for a dog and it keeps it off the, you know, right there at the fence line, so that's why we kinda looked at it like that.
Thank you.
This may be a question when we have our city attorney, but is, if they had any other violations like Marshall or whoever would have to go out and make sure that they don't have any of the other violations, whether it's weeds or obnoxious stuff or whatever, can that disqualify them for being, uh, able to have chickens?
I, I wouldn't think so, I mean, we would have to stipulate kinda the same thing as far as dogs and chain link fence, we'd have to stipulate that across the board, in my opinion, for animals. We'd have to revise all our ordinance on that side of things. It, I mean, like I said, try and treat it as domesticated animals. On there, we said a lot of our code enforcement refers, references domesticated animals and the term animals, a lot in it, that one as far as the impoundment and destruction was the one, one that was really specific to the dog side of things with that, so I think we just have to treat it just, just like dogs and cats, yeah.
So can we go with three chickens instead of six, since you can only allow three ch- dogs?
We can do whatever council desires.
You do that, then you take out the feeding the family with the eggs, I mean.
Well, if that's the case, then we have, technically, we're saying that chickens are domestic and not a farm animal.
Actually, the state said chickens are domestic.
That's what I'm saying, that's what they're domestic as, like a pet.
Yeah.
So which means you're saying that chickens are the same fitting as a dog, so which means they're not technically used for, for, uh, egg.
So then your domestic hunting dog can't be a hunting dog?
It can.
So, I mean, come on, there's.
I mean, what you use your chicken for is up to you. If you have, if you wanna sell its, its feed on, 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 on the internet, then I mean, it's what you're allowed to do, I mean.
Chase, did you have a comment?
Yes, please. First of all, thank you very much, both of you, this is really well-written, I'm really, really, this is awesome, thank you. Just had a couple of things, I missed last week, I do apologize, I just had a couple of things when I was reading, I got the draft. Some of the concerns that I would like to see put into it is, give me the tools to do my job if this, if you guys do move forward, give me the tools to do my job. I don't necessarily care, ten feet, five feet, one foot, I don't really care, as long as it's outlined what you want me and my guys to do. Uh, guys being gender neutral, sorry. Um, but some of the concerns I would throw in there and the calls that we get is wintertime, are we considering anything to do with winters, they're gotta have heat lamps, I'm guessing. Can we please spell out what you, they want to do? Cause right now I know exactly what I'm gonna get is, well, it doesn't say I have to have that. It doesn't say that I have to pick up the eggs, it doesn't say that I have to provide heat lamps in the winter, it doesn't say that I have to do X, Y or Z. And additionally to this, as far as I do like that there's no roosters involved in this, who's responsible of making sure those roosters go away? Or is it just gonna be, open the gate and I take care of them when it has me being the city? Or who's going to handle that and who's gonna stipulate that? Additionally, I would like to see when we kinda get down to the section where it says, can I turn your page?
Absolutely.
All right, I don't wanna lose your spot, but yours is right here, nice and pretty for me. Um, as far as fines, revocations, obviously, there's gotta be some kind of a graduated system to this. Just because I get called because your neighbor doesn't like you, which will probably happen, doesn't mean you lose your chickens, I like to see something like on the third account or third time we're called out and we're finding this being an issue of them being loose, you lose it or the second time, or just something, cause remember, I'm, we're gonna be dealing with this at Saturday and Sunday morning because the chickens are bothering them. I don't wanna put myself or the city in a bad position of like, okay, my officer showed up and now we took this chicken and what did we do with it? Uh, so I know, uh, city manager kinda touched on it, what do you want me to do with them once we get them? Do you want me to hold them, do you want me to get rid of them, do you want me to, what do you, what is it you want? I said, I'm not fighting anything, I just want to know what is expected of us. And this being a good start, I would like to see a little bit more detailed if this is what you guys would like to do, so that we're not kind of, I don't wanna be in a position to making decisions for you guys on the middle of a Saturday. Just my affair, two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, Megan, did you wanna speak at all?
Yes, and I do agree with Officer Lovato, I, I want there to be clear transparency, like if, what consequences come if you're not taking care of your um, chickens and animals. Um, the only other thing I want The only other thing I wanted to address was the fee amount. I know here in the city, we don't require a lot of other fees for animals that are within city limits, you know, the whole point of me trying to get chickens within city limits is to alleviate the cost of living, trying to provide eggs, good protein for my family and kids. So, I know $50 was what was stated, but I feel like that is kind of on the very high end of, across the board, and so I'd hate to see people just going around it just to avoid getting permits because of such a high fee. So, that's my two cents on that one. And then, as well as, sorry, the six hens, I know you're suggesting three, but again, the whole point is to alleviate the cost to be able to provide food for my family, and so, you know, if I have to settle with six, that is a decent amount for a family of four, but we do have families that are greater than, uh, four people here in Sydney limits. And so, they say six is good, and that's why I was shooting for 10, but if we can settle somewhere in the middle, that also would be reasonable, but it's, typically, a chicken can lay anywhere from three to four eggs a week, and so when you have six chickens, that's about 18 eggs to 24 eggs, and if you make breakfast for your family every day, that can get pretty narrow when you're, you're still having to go supplement that with the store, and so, that's just my two cents on that. Thank you.
Is there any more questions for Josh or anybody?
I'm not sure, what are you asking for us to do here?
So, beginning, this is an official reading on there, again, I was tasked out by Councilman Kirkman to just kinda combine some of the ordinances that Megan had presented at the last meeting, as well as review the code ordinance on there. So, moving forward, I think the only options that I'm aware of that we do is developing an official draft, if that's what council wishes, and then start going to the process through the three readings on that. Could come back with another draft, I don't know if that's necessary, I think if it is something that council is interested in seeing more, then those three readings would be enough as far as developing official ordinance, and if any chains and revisions need to be done between now and then, then we'll have three separate meetings to do that. Or council can wish to undergo any further work on the ordinance, we keep the ordinance the way it is, only allowing chickens in A, AR, R1A at the stipulated regulations that we have within there, and we'll continue to enforce as we have.
I would say, yeah, I would like to see additions of like consequences and...
Same concerns.
Yeah, and the heat lamps and like all that.
Is there anything in the ordinances now as far as dogs and cats being outside during certain weather and stuff like that?
There is, I do not have those on hand, but, but there is, it falls under animal neglect, I can't recite the ordinance or that section off the top of my head, but I can definitely have that prepared for next council meeting as well too, just to have a reference.
I mean, we're comparing dogs and cats and everything to chickens, so, and I get like labs, I mean, you can't get a lab out of the snow if you wanted to.
Yeah, but I do know there is specific, yeah, verbiage there for animals and neglect side of things, but I'd have to dig in a little bit deeper.
So, I don't think we need to vote on this, do we?
No.
Okay, on to the next, discussion of ordinance 1876, service classification of large power updates.
All right, so, just here again to bring councils back attention to ordinance number 1876 relating to electrical rates, and I do wanna be very clear that this discussion to follow does not involve conversations about increasing electric rates whatsoever. Rather, we are focusing on the additional revisions that were made to that ordinance in August that were simply just overlooked by a lot of us on the city side of things. Specifically, within that ordinance, we had additional verbiage to include procedures for classifying customers in the large general service rate and the addition, additional section for large power contracts. So, during our August meeting, we were so focused on rates that we did not give adequate attention to these additional changes, which do not reflect an increase in electricity rates. This review is intended to ensure that council is formally and fully informed of the specific ordinance revisions that we did, just did not give enough attention on. Again, I take ownership of that as well too, but wanted to just bring that back so we can look. So, the previous action, during the August 26 regular council meeting, city staff presented proposed revisions to ordinance 1876 for its third and final reading. These revisions at the time included changes to the electrical rate increases per kilowatt-hour, large power contracts, procedures for classifying customers in the large general service rate. So, during that discussion, as I stated, at that time, there were no major changes in the last revision for that third and final reading, other than shortening the electrical rate increase scheduled for four years to two years. So, upon review, I realized that I failed to highlight several important components of that ordinance during that third reading. The original version also included additional language regarding procedures for classifying customers in a large service rate, and then an additional section was adding and pertaining to electrical service, large power contract rate, in response to an increased nationwide interest in large power needs from a specific industry. So, following the discussion, there was no motion to pass ordinance 1876, and that ordinance did fail, but the ordinances, the additional verbiage within those ordinances also failed. So, previous discussion, currently, our large general service rate classification states that a customer whose service reaches a demand of 50 kilowatts or more during a fiscal year, October 1 through September 30, shall be moved to large general service rate and remain at that rate for the remainder of the fiscal year, plus one full fiscal year following. The city reviews all customers' usage history within the large general service rate classification each September. Any customer that does not meet or exceed the 50-kilowatt threshold is moved to the appropriate small general service rate beginning October 1. The proposed revision in the ordinance modified, in the proposed version that we had in August, modified this process as follow. Each year, including the year in which the ordinances pass, between August 15 and September 15, the city shall determine the monthly and annual peak demand of each customer in the residential small general service and large general service rate schedules for the prior demand audit period, July 1 to June 30. Any resident or small general service customer who establishes a peak demand of 50 kilowatt during the prior demand audit period shall be moved to large general service rate effective October 1 and remain in that rate through the following September 30. Any large general service customer that does not establish a peak demand of 50 kilowatt during the prior demand audit period shall be moved to the appropriate residential or small general service rate effective October 1 and remain in that rate through the following September 30. So, additional verbiage that we added along with that is that the city would provide written notice to any customer who establishes a peak demand of 40 kilowatts or greater for the first time. Such notice will indicate the customer's peak demand and provide information regarding the requirements of this classification process. Notices will be prepared based on meter readings from the prior two billing periods and issued on or about October 15, December 15, February 15, April, June, and August With that, that large power contract rate, so, this is something that we've never had as a city, and like I said, due to increasing demand from certain industries that require substantial power, we wanted to make sure that we added a new section to that ordinance to help protect us as a city in our current infrastructure. So, all service to customers with anticipated peak demand in excess of 5,000 kilowatts will be provided only via a customer-specific contract. Rates, terms, and conditions will be established in that contract, provided that any rates included will be cost of service-based and consistent with applicable state law. So, this, again, addition is intended to address large-scale power needs while ensuring compliance with cost of service principles in our state regulations. So, it is recommended, uh, the council task city staff with revising ordinance 1876 without making any changes to the rates that have been in place since 2020, for the purpose of reinstating specific procedural and structural updates originally included in the August revisions. Specifically, staff should replace Section C with the revised procedure for classifying customers in the large general service rate, including the added language assigning responsibility to the city to provide written notice to customers approaching the 50-kilowatt demand threshold. Reinstate the additional section pertaining to large power contract rates, and updating this procedure for classifying customers in the large service rate will allow the city to provide timely notification to those nearing 50-kilowatt demand threshold. This will give the electric department the opportunity to engage with customers, promote energy conservation practices, and potentially help them avoid unexpected increases in their bills. Under the current ordinance, customers who exceed 50-kilowatt demand threshold are penalized for up to two years, even if their demand later decreases. The revised procedure would allow the city to work with customers annually, fostering better communication and energy management. Additionally, reinstating the large power contract rate section positions the city to better accommodate large-scale industries with significant energy demands, an important step as we prepare for potential future growth and evolving business needs within our communities. Alternatives, councils may choose to vote no on the proposed revisions that do not affect the electrical rates. If council chooses this option, the city will continue to follow the current ordinance as written.
So, you're just saying that, um, people that go over will just be on it for, for October 1st to September 30th?
Yes, yep, so it'll, it'll be reviewed annually, as of right now, if you hit it once, you're on it for the rest of that fiscal year, and then an entire year after before you even have the chance of getting off it. So, someone that hit 50 kilowatts in November are gonna be on it until September 30, and then an additional year, even if they never hit that 50-kilowatt demand throughout that, rest of that fiscal year. So, it just gives us the option, I mean, they would still be put on demand, but helps us to be more accountable as well too, in making sure that we are running the reports necessary to provide those sound energy practices and educating some of our businesses on how we can help keep that rate a little bit lower for them. It's gonna help us promote our economic development and individuals coming in this community. Uh, we've been working with one individual that when they came in and purchased a new building, they were automatically put on the large demand rate, 50 kilowatts, and lights haven't, energy haven't been on for months on end, so we were able to reverse that internally, but this will just allow us to just, keep us accountable, and ensuring that we're reviewing this annually, and we're not sticking the bill to our businesses for a year and a half to up to two years at a time.
Does it matter if it's commercial or residential? 'Cause I know there was, before, it was, commercial and residential were two separate if you went over that 50 KW, right?
So, it, it's combined in there, I mean, we don't have very many residential's that are gonna hit that 50 KW on there, but if we do have residential's that are hitting that amount of power, that's still going against us, and our three-year average is our demand as well too, so, we can't penalize the commercial without having the same expectations for our residents as well.
So, we'll include them, and the residential will be included in it?
Residential will be included in that as well too, yep, any customer that hits that 50, or is approaching that 50-kilowatt hour during a report, noticing that 40 or above, then we'll reach out to them and let them know that they're approaching that, and then be able to provide them with some options to keep the, keep that energy down.
I know there was an issue with switching with Mean and Tanaska and trying to figure out, where do we, where do we, the city start seeing that demand fixed rate recovery start coming against us on there, and where, how do we come up with that 50, and is there a stepping stone from 50 to 60, like a percentage-wise, instead of, 'cause right now it's, I can't remember how exactly how it's written, but there's no stepping stone as far as that, is there a way to, whether you go down to 45 and a stepping stone up to 45, 55, or you start at 50 and a stepping stone up as a percentage-wise, instead of just getting hit with that, that, 'cause I think it goes right off like an 820 or something like that?
Yeah, and, um... As far as when, I mean, I think it's been at 50 KW for... For quite some time, and during that time, I... 35 years. Thank you, Kim.
35 years.
35 years, it's been at that 50 KW on there. I'm not sure what the rhyme or reason was for it at that time, I mean, we've been purchasing most of our energy from Mean for about that same time period as well too, so, that definitely could have made that decision. So, we do know they do a three-year rolling average as far as our fixed cost recovery, and that demand is included within that. There has been years, I think it was back in 2016, where our fixed demand was $20,000 higher than what it is today on there, so again, when digging into the details and that fixed cost recovery, it's hard to figure out how they justified the 50-kilowatt 35 years ago versus kinda where we're at today, just kinda keeping it consistent with what we've had for quite some time. There's other areas, I believe it's Alliance on there, that have a little bit higher of a threshold for their demand, but again, their utility practices and who they utilize, I don't know how they gathered the data to make those decisions.
So, ballpark, when you look up a picture of, down in the electrical dictionary, my picture's there, I just don't understand this at all, but how many businesses are right around this 50?
16, if I remember correctly, on there that are, that are just teetering the edge of it, was it 16?
Roughly 16, roughly 60 on the demand.
66 on the demand drop.
Thank you, Kim.
That are just over it all the time?
Yes, yep, yep, and there's those that they know that they're gonna need, need that capacity on there, so when they do come in to get their electrical on, they automatically sign up for the demand, just 'cause they know they're gonna utilize it, but we have about 16, it's been a couple of months since we looked at that, but about 16 that are just teetering right on the edge of going on to 50 kilowatt for a large general service.
And if you go over one time, you're kicked up for the next 12 months.
So, the one time for 40 and above, then it's a written warning on there, so, we are providing that notice with them, to work with them, to try to do good practices. I know that Kim has given great examples of working with Runza back in the day with them when they hit that, and they were able to help them get them off of it, and they've been off of it ever since. So, we will have that issued written warning the one time, we'll just be a lot, we found, well Derek found a, a lot more efficient way in running reports, it takes about five minutes to really showcase us where those individuals are and thing, so we'll keep track of that, if they hit it again after that in the next reporting period, then at that point, we'll, we'll move them over for at least a year, rest of fiscal year.
Can we legally say, um, if somebody comes in and buys a new property, can they see what, what the usage was from years past, an average?
We can't give actuals, but we can give...
A rough estimate, okay.
I think that'd be smart, as far as individuals are looking at buying properties, and I think it'd be smart for individuals to come in and talk with Marshall as well too, before they do any sort of renovations or builds, and it would save people a lot of headache and probably a lot of money as well, so, I would definitely welcome it. If there's anybody that's looking, come in here, please come and talk to our superintendents, come talk to our ladies at the front there as well too, and get a well-rounded knowledge of what it is gonna cost me to buy this building, spend it with electrical, and do the renovations, absolutely.
Is there a motion to pass?
Nope, so, it wouldn't be a pass, it would be to complete the revisions of the ordinance.
Yeah, complete, complete the revisions.
I'll motion we complete the revisions.
I'll second. Wouldn't mind seeing though if there was like, and we talked with Mean about it and with Tanas, it's hard to, to figure out where, how we starting, how we get hit with the demand on top of it.
Yes.
There was some clarification or some way to help when people ask those questions on how, how we get billed those, would be helpful too.
Okay, absolutely.
It's kinda hard now that we're switching, you know, so.
Lee?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
Bondagard?
Yes.
Ratcliffe?
Yes.
Scheduling of November 11 city council meeting for Veterans Day.
Yes, so, the regular scheduled city council meeting falls on Tuesday, November 11, which is Veterans Day, a recognized federal holiday. This memo is to seek council's preference on whether to proceed with the meeting as scheduled, cancel slash reschedule an observance for the holiday. Uh, is recommended that council discuss and determine their preference regarding the November 11 meeting. If there is a consensus to hold the meeting, staff will prepare accordingly. If the meeting is to be canceled or rescheduled, staff will coordinate notification to the public and stakeholders. Alternatives, proceed with the city council meeting on November 11 as scheduled. Cancel the November eleventh meeting and observance for Veterans Day. Reschedule the meeting to an alternate date and time convenient for council and the public.
The city will be closed that day?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there a bunch of, I mean, I can't really tell because it's two weeks away, but will we have a bunch of stuff on the agenda?
Not yet, but in two weeks, it fills up pretty quick. It can.
Have longer one on the twenty-fifth, but. I mean, I'm fine with rescheduling that, too.
The day before or the day after?
I am, too.
I know the day before I couldn't, but.
Day before you can't?
Wednesday or Thursday I could.
Wednesday's a little tough for me.
And I talked to Brett and he won't be back till Thursday.
I mean, Thursday the thirteenth, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. You alright with Thursday or?
Is there a motion to have the council meeting on Thursday the fourteenth?
Or thir- thirteen, thirteenth.
So moved.
So second.
Coons.
Yes.
Bondagard.
Yes.
Radcliffe.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Next council meeting will be Thursday the fourteenth. And on to city manager's report.
Alright, so not much this go-around. Uh, we do have our tenth annual trunk retreat this Friday, thirty-first, from four to six PM. Also want to let you all know that, uh, fire, city police, and county sheriffs have secur- have secured an abandoned house located on Seventh and Maple. So over the next few months, uh, they're gonna utilize this structure as training grounds on there. Um, right now, if you see any smoke coming from those buildings, that is from a smoke machine. Nothing is on fire. I'm gonna promise it's not gonna be on fire when they're done training with that for some live fire training. Um, but just wanted to make the public aware of that. If you get any calls of smoke coming from that property, it is being utilized by our law enforcement and fire crew. Uh, tomorrow, we do have a meeting with Brickyard Consulting LLC. We received their sixty percent design plans. Um, so we're scheduled to meet with them at one-thirty to discuss, uh, some of the process moving forward on that, and that'll be here in the council room.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow, one-thirty, yep. Outside of that, let's see here, just wanted to provide a follow-up on the economic development workshop that was held on
October sixth with E three and community members in discussion, uh, in discussing potential formation of an economic development corporation.
So just wanted to remind everyone that during that workshop, the county commissioner, Phil Sanders, suggested holding a joint meeting between the city council and Cheyenne County Commissioners to further discuss the possibility of forming such corporation. Uh, it is my understanding that E three will formally present their intent to establish an EDC to all the county commissioners on November third. So I do plan on attending that meeting and just making sure that I'm present and gathering additional details on their proposals. Uh, following that presentation, uh, I would look at creating a memo for our next council meeting to officially identify council's direction on Nev steps, next steps, including on whether or not we would like to pursue a joint workshop with the county commissioners or kind of where we're at in the process with economic development. So just wanted to bring that back up. I know it's been a little bit since, since we've had that discussion, so. And that is. Gentlemen?
Okay. Elliot, do you got anything? Stan?
Been busy lately. Big thing that we're trying to work on project-wise is we're starting to, with Josh's help and all the superintendents and department heads working on our emergency management plan. Kind of making our communication system more of us getting an idea of what resources we actually have. Trying to get a curve there, it happens to be, uh, the major snowfall all has not leaked, but we are most prepared we possibly can do, and other than that, kind of just getting ready for Halloween.
Marshall? Autumn? Kagan?
Tonight, you have seventeen currently, the total is thirty-seven views.
Hank? Got any more?
No, Roger. Things going pretty good. We did get the new signs up for the two-hour parking ordinance that you guys revised. The old ones got taken down, the new ones got put up this last week. We had to order them in, and so they're up. And other than that, we've just been getting everything ready for snow removal. We only got, I think, one vehicle left that we're still working on. Everything else is ready for Mother Nature. Well, we're not ready for Mother Nature, you know, but we're ready to fight the spell we have. Other than that, normal.
Chase?
Uh, right now, we're blowing out sprinklers around our parks. Um, we winterized our bathrooms yesterday, or actually today. Um, got that all done. And then gonna help out with trunk or treat this Friday and slowly moving our way towards tree work.
Tom? Dean?
Yeah, just, uh, I have a couple of things to guess. Uh, one I'd need to cancel, uh, we're moving forward with the new residential trash truck that we, uh, had approved at budget session. We've got paperwork and application filled out back to the company, waiting on approval. And hopefully we should hear some back in a couple of weeks.
That's a lease? Is that what that one is?
Uh, truck's been in Denver for a couple of months, so it's ready to go. Just waiting on all the paperwork. And tomorrow is the last day of dress, Ken, so we got one set up.
Jeremy?
Um, not much. Sam, I think somebody reached out to me and said, thank you. I think we already talked to you about it, but they thought your, your, uh, police officer handled it very respectfully and, so appreciate that. Looks good.
Burke?
Nothing.
Nope.
Nothing.
I want to say congratulations to Autumn, Chase, Derek, and Craig on completing the Cheyenne County Leadership Class. And also would like to thank all the first responders, police, fire department, EMS for the busy week they had last week. And good luck to the football and volleyball and their postseason activities.
And that's it.
And we are going to go into closed session for the purpose of golf audit and personnel matters for the electrical department.
Need a motion?
Need a motion.
I'll motion to go into closed session for those reasons.
I'll second.
Motion by Lee, second by Radcliffe.
Bondagard.
Yep. Yes.
Radcliffe.
Radcliffe.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.